We're. Up, we're on. Terry, we're live.
We are live.
It's one minute.
I was looking at the clock. It's like one minute.
Right, and according to the internet, it's.
Still.
Just turn seven.
Just turn seven.
Yep.
Oh, we've got it.
Okay. Okay, we're on the live now, so I'm gonna open, there's two separate cases, it's the same thing, but I think I'll run them one at a time.
Sure.
Just makes it easier for Kevin to take a minute, then we won't keep bouncing back and forth on different parts of it, so. I'm gonna open the case, so I'm gonna introduce myself, I'm Terry Barnser, I'm the chair.
Teresa Bascom.
Kathy Mayo.
Bonnie Winona.
Okay, and I'm gonna take, and you guys can come up at the table if you want. Okay, so the chairman should call the hearing to session, members of boards may ask questions during their testimony. Each person who appear requires to state their name and address and indicate an affiliation to the case. Any, any member of the board through the chairman may request any party to the case to speak a second time. Any party to the case who wants to ask a question of another party to the case must do so through the chairperson. The applicant shall be called to present their case, and those abutters in favor shall be allowed to speak. Those abutters in opposition shall be allowed to speak. The board will hear any evidence that pertains to the case from the other parties that wish to speak. The application, and those in favor shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. Those in opposition shall be allowed to speak in rebuttal. And then they'll close the hearing, and then we'll, so what I'm gonna do is open one case, and then I'll close that one, then I'll open the next one, we won't make a decision until we close them both, so.
Okay. Doesn't look like you have anybody speaking against or for, just the two of you.
Right, we only have a.
No audience.
We only have a four-member board, you're entitled to a five-member, but if you wanna go follow the four, you can. You, you have right up to the end, I mean, to change your mind if you want. Okay, so I'm gonna open, this is case 22003 VA, this was a continuance. This is the application from BSC Group on behalf of Concrete Products of Londonderry, requesting a variance from Article Two, Section E2G of the Nottingham Zonerdance to permit the building of a manufactured facility that exceeds thirty-four feet maximum building height. Building height, zoning ordinance. The property is located at 160 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map three lot two. Okay, you can speak and read.
Yeah, my name is David Biati, I'm the project manager for BSC, and.
My name is George Salmon from Salmon Construction, I'm representing Sheik Concrete Products, I'm from Pelham, New Hampshire.
Okay. Okay, you can read your criteria or explain.
Well, essentially, for, for this particular case, we're looking for a variance on the height of the building from thirty-four feet to forty feet.
Right, how high is the existing building that's there? You got any idea?
Uh, I think it's probably thirty-eight or so, thirty-nine.
Yeah, it looks higher than the thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, not exactly sure.
And are the, and you're looking for also the sta, the.
Correct.
Silo?
Yeah, that will be higher than forty feet.
So that silo will be the same, be similar to that one?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know if you guys were going with bigger ones.
It may be the same one, they may end up.
Yeah, they said something about, yeah, they said maybe they just moved that one over there, so. Okay, and this is gonna be a, a flat roof?
It's gonna be a low pitched roof, so it's gonna have like a one pitch to the roof, it's a metal steel building roof.
Oh, okay.
We'll have a small pitch to it.
Gonna have a small pitch.
Yep.
And your wall will be like forty, I mean, not forty.
The very tip of the building would be forty feet, so the bottom would be like thirty-nine feet, you know? They run a crane inside the building?
Right, yeah, we looked inside, yeah, we could see, he was explaining to us that, yeah, you could just, on some of those forms, just get over the top of them.
And that, that crane's only a five-ton crane, they're probably putting a twenty-ton crane in the new building.
Yeah.
Because everything, as you can see, is so heavy up there, and so you lose about five or six feet for that crane, so that brings it down even lower, and they have what they call a pick height, and some of the forms are ten feet tall.
Yes.
And for, for safety reasons, that's why they need the height, that's the.
Right, he said, he said for dumping and, and pulling stuff sometimes out of the forms.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, 'cause that's probably like a, that's at least a five-rod building or pitch on that one, right? That's pretty.
Correct, yeah, I'd say probably a four or five pitch on that, and that's like a wooden truss building, this is gonna be a steel building.
Yeah.
Totally different building, but style in terms of, you know, construction.
Right, and it's gonna be cement all the way around, and.
It's gonna be steel on the sides, or like metal siding on the side.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna have metal siding?
Yeah, and it'll be up, concrete about five feet up on the sides, so it'll be concrete on the sides, and then it'll be steel on the sides.
Okay, look, we have a, we have five, five board members now.
Sorry for being late.
Okay, you can read your, your criteria on your application, do you have that?
You may not have had this too.
Kevin has.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yes.
So on the supporting information sheet, granting the variance would not be contract, contrary to the public interest because the building would be of sufficient distance from the street and the butters. Number two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the building is industrial in nature, in an industrial zone, the thirty-four-foot height is somewhat restrictive for their current crane and rail operation. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because the interior crane and rail technology requires overall production building height of approximately forty feet. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the structure would be of sufficient distance from the abutters and well-screened.
Five.
Keep going?
Yep.
Unnecessary hardship, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardships because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the current op, operation consists of older technology for their precast concrete manufacturing operation. The proposed facility will require additional headroom and thus ceiling height. All other zoning requirements will be met with this proposal. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because the operation is industrial in nature and is located in an industrial zone.
Okay, I had a few questions on the, when we went out there, we went, you know, up to that bank, and the steep bank, and there were two stakes, that's where the building starts.
Uh-huh.
Is it, are you carrying that elevation all the way back through?
That's not a stake with, with elevation, it's only a location, it's an approximate location.
Right, but you're gonna be maybe up a little higher, or?
Probably up a little bit higher.
What was, like, we were back by the leach field, what was the elevation difference from where that, you got that thing that shows a leach field in the back? We, we saw that test pit, that's how we.
Right. I'm gonna have to look, I'm gonna have to look for that information.
Okay. But it's not gonna be completely level, right, from where?
No.
Okay.
No, it, it was based on the, you know, the, the position of the, of the slab elevation was based on the seasonal high water table.
Right.
And to give us enough clearance for the stormwater that we're proposing.
Okay.
We have a slab elevation of four oh one sixty.
Four oh one sixty?
Four oh one point six.
What is that out on the front, then, out by the pot, out by where they store the stuff, is that?
Yes.
Is that four oh one, or is that?
That, that's gonna be the, the slab elevation consistent throughout.
No, no, I'm just saying, what was the elevation out by the, where were those two stakes were, out by the bottom of that hill?
The existing elevation?
Yeah, somewhere.
It could be about three ninety-five, three ninety-six.
Okay, so you're gonna go up six feet roughly from there?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Roughly, okay, that's why I wondered, just, what is it back by that leach field back?
We have it at about four oh one back there.
Okay, so that's about the right height of the, okay, so you're not gonna do much.
Right, yeah.
I didn't know how much about you were gonna be down.
Right.
It was hard to judge.
Sure.
If you were gonna be, if it was gonna be, you know, a bit of a ridge, but it's gonna be fairly flat there, right?
Yeah, we haven't put any elevations on any stakes or anything, it's very undulating, after you get up the first incline, very undulating.
I know, it gets pretty ledgey, pretty big rocks up in there, yeah.
But very good material.
Yeah, no, I looked at the one test pit you left open, it was pretty good-looking stuff, really, I didn't even see any real wa, I didn't see any hot air in, in that one spot, but.
We didn't hit anything, except all the test pits that we have were all good material.
Yeah, no, I, I looked down, I figured I'd see somewhere along the line some hot air, but.
The deeper we got, the material get better, you know, which is unheard of. Yeah, there seems to be a natural swale up into the south where we're trying to propose some, some stormwater measures, some natural runoff.
Yeah, 'cause you guys have to go to another hearing, right?
Planning board.
Planning board, no, but does, is there some?
Uh, we're having a, they're conducting a regional planning, an RPI.
Okay, that's what it was.
Impact studying.
Yeah, and we'll have a peer review for the, for the plan, for the site plan set as well.
Okay, and you saw the recommendations by the fire chief?
We did.
He put it?
Yes.
And you're all right with all?
Yeah. Yeah, we're having, uh, we're having the building designed by a state engineer right now for all the cisterns, for all the fire safety stuff to take on all his concerns, that's in the process of getting designed right now. So we're gonna have a, a generator that will be there to put everything on, in some cases of fire, the sprinkles will be all operable.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to.
We had a couple of things about wanting one other door added and some fireworks, we're having all that taken, it's all in consideration, we're gonna do all that.
How big a cistern is the fire marshal asking you to put in?
Uh, we don't know that exactly, that number yet, so it's getting designed, but I think we have one cistern on that that's. We propose thirty thousand gallons. Yep. Four, force individual seventy-five hundred gallon cisterns.
I mean, in that building, it's not a lot of burnable stuff.
No, it isn't.
There isn't.
It's pretty.
It's quite a bit, it's a quite a bit, quite a bit overdesigned, but.
Yeah, there wasn't much.
We just, one will appease, you know, whatever, whatever the fire chief obviously recommends, we'll, we're gonna follow, and I, I think that at one point in our negotiations, he said that twenty thousand was, was insufficient, so we went up to thirty. And as well as, there's an office that's on the building as well, that's only one story, so, that's all one story, so originally, you know, the fire chief was concerned if it was gonna be two or three stories, there's only one story of office space, everything else is manufactured, but the manufacturing is where the building's gonna be taller, where the office spaces, it's only a one-story building.
Yeah, so they can.
That's gonna be sprinkled as well.
Right.
And I saw that he mentions an additional egress door for that.
Correct.
Carfen space.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this?
Bonnie, you got anything?
I have a really a question about why there's only one, only one set of five criteria if there are two variances.
Oh, there's two.
There's two.
There's two, there's another set, I don't know.
There's one from when the case was first.
Yeah.
Heard it should be in your binder still, Bonnie?
Yeah, there's a continuance one, that was what we.
I think I missed that meeting.
Well, we, we didn't actually, they didn't show, so we didn't get to it.
They missed that meeting too, so. So you were all set. It was funny, we were here, there was a guy in the audience, I thought it was you guys, so we opened the hearing, or we were gonna open it, but then you weren't here.
We were waiting by the phone.
I know.
We thought that we had to hear from, from Dale directly.
Oh, okay.
With the rejection of the building application.
Oh, yeah, right, you had to have the alert.
So, yeah, slipped through the cracks.
Do you see it, Bonnie? Do you wanna see the five criteria for this? I've got it here.
By the time he presents them, yes.
Well, you, you would've.
The one I have is where.
The building? Oh, you do?
You have the thirty-four foot or the fifty?
So you don't have the apron one?
I sent, we sent a room, all the rooms.
You did?
Yeah.
This is the, one for the apron? Okay, fifty foot setback, we're, yeah, that's just, that's the apron.
This looks like it right here.
Is that you?
Somebody.
Not me.
Teresa, I think you're.
Hold on, Teresa, she's not.
I think your, your, I mean, your phone was vibrating.
I think your phone made noise.
My phone?
We think it. It was by elimination that we figured. Okay, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Do you have any questions over here? Nope, nope. Okay, so I'm gonna.
I do have a question about how did you get that building in there to be taller than thirty-four feet?
The first one?
The, the existing building?
They acquired it.
Yeah, Sheik Concrete, Sheik Concrete bought that business back a number.
Yeah, that was like twenty, thirty years ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
Where they had it.
So I don't know what that building, if it was built for that specific construction or not, but that was an existing property that.
I don't know if we had our thirty-four foot there, or.
Yeah.
We might or not, or they might've got a variance, I don't know.
Yeah.
So you guys bought it, but you've been using it?
We, we bought that property, I would think twenty years ago.
You've been using it a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done with that one? Okay, I'm gonna, um, close. I'm gonna close case twenty-two zero zero three VA. I'm gonna open the case B, which is twenty-two zero zero five VA. Application for BSC Group on behalf of Concrete Products of Londonderry, requesting a variance from Article Two, Section E2A2 of the Nottingham Zonerdance to permit a concrete apron installed with a fifty-foot setback from a property line where a hundred-foot setback is required. Property is located at 160 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map three lot two. Okay, you can read your criteria and.
Yep, number, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because concrete apron would be of sufficient distance from the street and the butters. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because the building is industrial in nature, in an industrial zone, the apron, apron would be beneficial for drainage purposes and fire department access. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the concrete apron is important to the engineering design of the site. The variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because concrete apron would be of sufficient distance from the butters and well-screened. Unnecessary hardship, the current operation consists of older technology for their precast concrete manufacturing operation. The proposed facility will require, will require the apron for drainage purposes and fire department access. All other zoning requirements will be met with this proposal. B on that, on the next section, the proposed facility will require the concrete apron to op, optimize the design of the building and the site. Sounds a little redundant. Sounds like the first one.
All right. I had one question, you showed the building at a hundred and thirteen feet, so you moved over more, thirteen feet more?
Moved it over to, for grading.
So is the apron gonna be sixty-three feet? Instead of fifty?
Actually, it's not sixty-three, it's sixty, well, sixty-two and a half.
Okay, so the apron's gonna be sixty-two and a half?
Yes.
Okay, so it's.
Originally proposed fifty.
Fifty, right, okay, that's why I wondered if it had moved, or if you made it wider, I didn't know which.
And obviously, the apron will, will be at grade, will not even be visible to, to any of the abutting properties. It's really to, obviously, prevent erosion, assist with, you know, vehicular access in and out of the building, around the building, obviously for fire department.
Right, you would do more damage to the.
A terrible amount of damage.
Yeah, I mean, you'd do a lot of damage and have a lot more runoff with.
Yes.
Now, are you storing, are they storing anything in that area, or is all the storage gonna be over where it is now?
There's gonna be a thing on the plan where the storage is gonna be, nothing gets stored up against the building.
No, but I mean, they're gonna store some on that piece, on that, around the new building or near the new, new building?
In the back of the building, there's gonna be storage.
On the other side of the leach field?
Correct.
Okay. And that will all be?
On the left side of the building too, on the back.
Oh, on the left side where the?
Yeah. The west. Yep.
Okay, where that, in between the wetland and the building?
Probably up here, maybe a little bit down here.
Okay.
This is maneuverability, this is required for the maneuverability of these forms in and out of the building, as they, as they cure. Yeah, they have a lot of forms on the outside.
They probably store some forms over there, or?
They have like a lot of forms now that are outside the building, that they're planning on putting inside the building, so they can pour inside, 'cause it's really hard for them to move forms in and out of the building, that's why the facility that they have now is really not efficiency working for them, because they're constantly, whatever they are, they have to take the forms out, put the forms back in and stuff, so those.
When we looked in there, yeah, it was, it was pretty full.
Oh, yeah, and that was one of the concerns that the fire department had, is that, you know, what was gonna be in the building, it's all gonna be forms, like, there's not like.
How wide is the existing building?
The existing building, I, I'm, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'm guessing about eighty feet wide, I would say.
About eighty, and this is ninety?
Yeah.
And how long is that other one, maybe?
Maybe a hundred feet?
Hundred.
Maybe a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-five maybe, so, yeah. Okay, so this will be.
Should know, I've worked in that building, so I should know, but I don't off the top of my head, I'm guessing about that size.
Can I ask how much more water are you going to be using?
Very little, you know, they don't use a lot of water, even in their, their chemical process, they don't use a lot of water, so.
Making these form concrete?
Yeah, so the concrete they use is a, is a premix that they use, they don't use a lot of water to mix the concrete, so it's a very little bit amount of water that they use, it's all, they have to have this certain like rating for the concrete, 'cause it's like a five-thousand-pound mix, so in the old days, you used to mix it with water, now they mix it with a premix material that mixes with the concrete, that makes it harder, quicker, sets up different, there's nothing like that, so they don't use very much water. And it's not like, I know there was a concern too, that they do power washing and all that stuff, they don't, the forms are all cleaned every day, so it's like a cake batter mix, if you're making a cake, you mix it up, you put it in a bowl, and then you take the thing out of the mix, and that's exactly the way it works, that's how precast works. They don't, Sheik Concrete doesn't sell concrete, they only make precast concrete.
You make the concrete on-site, or do you bring it in?
They make it on-site, yeah.
Why do you say that they don't use much water? I don't understand what you mean by premix.
So they have a, they have a, a material that they use that's not water, they buy this material, it's a, it's like a mixture, an admixture that they mix to the concrete that makes the concrete, it sets up the concrete quicker to a certain consistency, so they don't have to vibrate the concrete, years ago, they used to have to mix concrete, vibrate it and all that stuff, it's, it's totally done differently now. They do use some water, but very little water, it's not like they use like, I think we put that in the, in the calculations of how much water we use. I think we had a calc of approximately twenty-five hundred gallons per day. The maximum.
Per day.
Bathrooms and everything.
And, and this premix is a liquid, it's a?
It's a liquid, yeah, yeah. It is, yeah.
Now, on.
They buy, they have like a vat that's, they store it in, you know, and that premix is mixed in with the concrete, with cement, that they bring on, so it's in the silo that's there, there's the dry mix cement, and then they have sand and cement, they have bins up there that have the sand, the stone, and the cement, and it mixes together.
Now, on this, your other plant, you know, it's so wide and so long, but you've got that cement mixing, batching plant on the side, right?
Yep.
So where, where are you gonna have that on this, what are you gonna have on this one?
Yeah, the, the, it's gonna be on the left side of the building, you know, the west side of the building.
So it's within the, what's there? What you're showing, it's gonna be?
Within the footprint of the building. Yep.
Yeah, it's within the footprint, okay, that's all I wondered, what, how you were gonna, so you're just gonna have it down this side and?
Correct.
It was kinda hard today with it not being marked out.
Yeah, it's.
Where, where, what was gonna be, and how far out the footprint of the apron went.
Yeah, when we followed Leach Field, that helped, you know, at least we knew.
Kind of maybe in this.
Yeah, we kinda knew then, but. And we didn't get any ticks, I don't think, no.
Nope, no ticks.
Lucky last time I was out there. I sprayed myself, and I could home that la, that night, and I had a tick.
Yeah, there's a lot of ticks this year, yeah.
I was, I had one on me, so.
We went around, we were, we were gonna go up the hill, but we thought, no, we'll be all ticks.
Nope, nope.
Okay, um, and then there's some tree, you, you're gonna plant some stuff along the line eventually, is that right?
As well as a privacy fence between the abutment. Yeah, so, I'm gonna put a privacy fence up there.
Oh, you're gonna put a privacy fence, okay.
And, and, and some landscaping trees as well. Yeah. Some vegetation.
How tall is the fence going to be?
I'm not sure, you know, we defer to the town on that, whoever they like to see.
It's gonna be six or eight feet, one or the other.
Right.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Now, that house that's on that lot is, it's over a ways, right? I mean, it's out near Route Four, that's not it, that square is not it, right? You've got.
Yeah, I don't think it's on this one here.
It's on the one you have over in front of you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on this one here, it's out, yeah, it's probably like in the front third of the lot, so. I just saw that green thing, yeah, I didn't know what that was.
Yeah.
'Cause when we were out there, I mean, there were a lot of trees, you couldn't really.
You couldn't see a house.
You really could, yeah, you could barely.
And the house that's closest to Sheik Concrete.
Right, you own that one.
Yeah, they own that, correct. I, I was actually out there all winter, surveying this on the weekends.
And you still couldn't see much.
And I couldn't see anything in the winter.
Yeah.
When I went back out in the spring for some test pitting, I got, I didn't know where I was, I lost my.
Oh, really?
And I'm the one that set all the control out there, so, so it's a considerable difference of foliage coverage now than obviously in the winter, but even in the winter, I couldn't, I couldn't see very much. Very, very thick.
Yeah, it was pretty, pretty.
Even, even the rear of the, of the property, the abutting property is very thick, so.
Okay, are there any other questions on this variance, on the setback?
When we were talking earlier, I asked about the cement pad, 'cause I was thinking about it earlier, I wondered if it needed to be as wide as it did, as you're having it, and you mentioned that the fire department is the one who was requesting that the cement And you mentioned that the fire department is the one who was requesting that the cement pad be out and that it was required also for the weight of the equipment.
Yeah, most of it's for the weight of the equipment, as well as, the fire department does like to have access all the way around the building.
Right.
They didn't give us a number on it. Snow removal.
Okay.
They didn't give us a dimension, they, you know, obviously.
Oh, we need to be for a vehicle to get by.
Correct. Sure.
Okay.
In the existing building that's there now, if you look at the door, there is a concrete pad there as well.
Yeah, there's nothing else, just right in the front.
Exactly.
I saw it on your drawing there.
Yeah, which is, uh, which is the gray here and there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the concrete. Any other questions, comments?
Still.
I think.
If this building is forty feet tall, are we gonna have to buy another fire truck?
I, I, for, I don't think we need it for a metal structure.
So that question did come up with the fire chief, and, uh, so we talked to him about there is access, like, uh, he was concerned about a fire escape, like where the silo is, so we put an access to the roof for that specific purpose, so he would have access to the roof of the building.
It's lining, you mean?
Correct, so he'd be able to get to the roof.
I know, it's, it's.
I thought you were gonna have sprinklers.
Yeah, there's really nothing that would catch on fire, you know, so there's, uh, 'cause it's a steel building, it's steel erection, but they still wanted to be able to have access to the roof in case they needed to, so we did put that for access, so he will have access to the roof. That was one of the fire department's, um, questions that we answered for them.
You make concrete walls?
They make concrete products, so they would make, uh, they would make like jersey barriers, septic tanks, uh, light bases.
Oh, I thought you made, I thought you made like tilt-up stuff.
No, no, they don't make any tilt-up stuff in there, at the present time. They make all, uh, you know, uh.
Call it art.
Pre-made footings, septic tanks, uh, round tanks.
Stairwells.
Stairwells, um, they make, uh, basement bulkhead stairs, they make, they make a lot of products. There's a lot more products now than there was twenty years ago.
Yeah, they are, it's four.
There's, uh, I think they make, you know, probably, I'm guessing at the top, they had probably sixty different products that they make, you know, if Shaconcrete has four locations, this is the smallest of their locations that they have. And, uh, so they make different things at different locations as well.
Okay, thank you.
What are they gonna do with the existing building?
They're gonna, they're gonna still use it in the same capacity that they're using it now. Uh, they're gonna use that building for more like specialty things, like sometimes they build products that they need to do custom forms, and it might take three or four days to, to pour something in there, which they can't really do a lot of that now because they do repetitive pouring every day, so some products, they pour the same product every day consistently 'cause they sell that every day, like precast stairs, precast septic tanks, stuff. But then they get stuff in once in a while, like, they did concrete docks there for a while, they're making concrete docks, you know, so.
Are they gonna keep the cement batching plant that's there in there and?
Yeah, the operation. So this new building is just kind of an expansion of their existing business. They just don't have enough room there, and in the building, the technology has changed the way that they do their forms and everything, and, uh, it just doesn't work for them, you know, so that's why they're adding this space. But they're gonna keep the building totally operable, still use that building.
Right, when we were up there, uh, he said something about maybe moving a coring, they got a coring machine or something.
Yeah, they have a coring machine, yeah.
They might move that into that building, the existing building.
They have to cut a hole in a, in a piece of concrete, you know.
Yeah.
Do you make any post-tension stuff?
Excuse me?
Do you make any post-tension concrete products?
No, no, no. Yeah, they make, like I say, most of their products they make are, uh, you know, pre-made footings, septic tanks, light bulb posts, uh, bulkhead stairs, jersey barriers, uh, gas traps from the ground, they do utility tanks inside the ground, a lot of pump chamber tanks, stuff like that. Cisterns, they make concrete cisterns as well. They make, uh, anything that you can think of that can be made with pre-cast, head walls, all that stuff. So they sell a lot of stuff for the road, and bridges and stuff like that, but nothing precast that's pre-stressed and, uh, and tilt wall. If they did build a wall, it'd be very small, like a head wall for drainage, or something like that.
Okay. Where would the cisterns go in that, that you put in?
So we have the cistern, the post-cisterns are, are somewhere thereabouts at this particular point. We're still waiting again for the final negotiation with the fire chief, uh, with respect to size and final design, and then we'll have the exact location over here on the side of the building.
Okay, so there. So they'll be kind of in between the two buildings somewhat, and, okay. Any other questions, comments?
How many plants do they have?
I think right now they have eight to ten at this facility. I think overall they have about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty. They're hiring a lot of people at the other locations for like truck drivers and stuff, but, you know.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
What does that mostly do with their, um, waste materials?
It gets all trucked offsite.
Yeah.
He said they haul all their stuff off to Continental?
Yep.
I think they haul it all off to Continental.
You're saying that the people who bring in the gravel, I think it was, take away?
Continental paving?
Yeah, they buy their stuff from Continental and then they, they haul their, all the concrete leftover stuff over there to crush it.
Crush it, reuse it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, um, it sounded like there was very little waste at all there, which is.
There's no reason, reason to. You can, you can crush any, anything leftover concrete into base rock for building a road. Very easy, especially if it's.
It's amazing when the.
Especially if it's still green.
When they make their own concrete, they're gonna have a crane and they have a station, each form knows exactly how much concrete they need, so it's all done on like an iPad and the concrete mixes, it brings it over from the crane, they pours it, so there's, there's very little waste, which is kinda surprising. You'd think that they're, oh, we got an extra yard of concrete, they don't waste their concrete, so.
So there's clothes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments, we're done with that file?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna close, uh, case twenty-two zero zero five VA, and then we'll open it up for a discussion amongst ourselves, if anybody.
I'm wondering on this, with regard to the building height, if we need to have it be conditional on all of the requirements from the fire chief being approved first, 'cause he states very clearly in here that.
Right, we can put.
They need to have a, um, pass his inspection before they can get the certificate of occupancy.
Right, we can just put this in, uh, we'll say contingent to the fire chief's recommendation and put this into the record.
Okay.
He does, he does say, if I may, uh, that he doesn't have any objections to the height variance in there.
Right.
Right. Yep.
But we were just talking about the other stipulations he had, the cistern and the.
Sure.
It says recommended approval of waiver for overall building height based on occupancy type, but then he says, uh, a cistern acceptance is required prior to building occupancy.
Yep. So we're gonna have that, that's in the process of getting designed right now, that whole system.
Okay. Do you wanna motion or do we?
You can, if you wanna make a motion.
You need a motion on each one, right?
I'm gonna do it for both.
Can you move on both or just one on each?
Well, we'll move one at a time.
Yeah.
I'll make it easier for Kevin.
I feel like that's a safe, I think that's a safer, because they're technically two different.
Yeah, they are, one we had earlier, and.
All right.
Different number.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
You're gonna make it?
Uh, yeah, I move to approve case number two-two dash zero zero three dash VA. Um, application from BSC G group, as stated on the agenda. And this is for the building height, and it will be contingent on approval of the cistern from the fire department in meeting their requirements.
Yeah, we'll, Kevin, we'll incorporate all this into the record, the recommendations of the fire chief, and that will be, that will be the condition that will be in the, the variant.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, um, the application on twenty-two zero zero three VA, and this is for the building height of thirty-four feet, uh, not, uh, exceeding thirty-four feet. This will be for forty-foot building height, and this will be parta- it will be, um.
Contingent.
Contingent to the fire chief's recommendations, which we have put into the record, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Either by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We have a motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I move to be approve case two-two dash zero zero five dash VA, application from BSC G group, excuse me, BSC group, um, on behalf of Concrete Products of Londonderry as listed on the agenda for the, actually, it's not a fifty-foot setback right now, it's what?
Sixty-two and a half.
Setback on the property line where a hundred-foot setback is required. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two zero zero five VA, the application from BS A group, BSC group, on behalf of Concrete Products of Londonderry, and this is for, uh, the setback on Article Two, Section E two A two of the Nottingham Old Ordinance, where the setback for the slab is, would be a hundred foot, and they're asking for a setback of, uh, a fifty-foot setback or sixty-two and a half foot is what they have on their plan, so. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye, aye? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, you're good. And it's thirty days, but I mean, I don't see you getting going quite that quick.
No. Thank, thank you very much, thank you.
You gotta be fast if you'll get that done in thirty days.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, Kevin is looking at you.
I failed it. Um, so, so, how far are you from the, this would be.
Are you gonna be at the Thursday screening?
Yes. Excellent.
Yeah, I'm interested to see that, I've, I've seen the prequel.
Okay, do we have the minute?
We have minutes, did you guys get the minutes?
Yeah.
I think there's only this one set of minutes, right?
One set of minutes.
I only had two minor edits for the minutes, and, and they were really truly just minor edits. One was changing the word of to on and adding have lived there on one statement that he mentioned that Bonnie had. Other than that, I didn't see anything else.
He's a cheater. Really?
Out on the beach.
We're going tomorrow, we'll be there tomorrow night. The canned dominiums.
Did anybody else have any edits on the minutes?
Thank you.
All right.
Take care, guys. Does everybody get?
While you were talking, she changed everything in the minutes. Wiped out everything, so you heard.
The first, second, fifth, and ninth paragraph.
All wiped out.
All gone, Kevin, too bad, it's not over.
So did everybody see the minutes of five eleven?
Yes, I saw it on the.
All right, I move to approve the minutes of five eleven as minorly edited.
You wanna give them the edit?
He already, he got them, I sent them to him.
Oh, you gave it to him, oh, okay.
Efficiency.
When I read them, I sent them out.
All right, you're good.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, second, yep. Okay, it's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from five seventeen twenty-two.
Five eleven.
What was it?
Five eleven.
Five seventeen.
Five eleven.
Oh, it says five seventeen here, I haven't read it.
I made a mistake.
Oh, which way? Uh, seventeen's right, I think, 'cause we don't have a meeting.
Five seventeen's correct.
We don't have a meeting on the.
Hi.
I do apologize, I, I, I sent this out, when I resend the minutes, five eleven was an important meeting.
Ah.
When I did send out the minutes last, I tried to explain, I said, I apologize, I sent it out.
Okay.
Kevin, your job is on the line.
Every day.
So for five's, approval of the five seventeen, we gotta vote on that.
I think we have to redo the motion because you cited the eleventh.
I just corrected it.
We corrected, okay, there's a motion to approve the minutes for five seventeen twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.